I call this meeting to order at 5:00 P.M. It's now time for our land acknowledgement statement. We, the municipality of Red Lake, acknowledge that our foundation and the spaces in which we live and maintain are on the unceded lands of the Isonapak of Red Lake, the traditional lands of Laxul, and Wapus Gang First Nations, and Treaty III territory. As we are all Treaty people, we will continue to cherish our reciprocity of all our relationships on these sacred lands and waters. As well, anyone present may not record video or audiotape and/or leave any cell phone on without the permission of the chair. It's now time for the disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof, for the agenda for this meeting, and for minutes of a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. Seeing none, we will move down to administrative reports. Item 5.1A, Crown Land Development. Mr. CAO.
Thank you. This is just a follow-up to many conversations that the Mayor Council has had along with staff regarding looking for opportunities for development within our municipality, specifically focusing more on Red Lake. We conducted an exercise and identified several properties. We came down to three, and two of which were waterfronts. So, we have, we've met with MNRF, and it was clear that anything on the water is off the table. They won't entertain any discussion for development on Red Lake. In saying that, we did have a meeting, a delegation during the virtual email conference with Minister Rickford. That was back on August, Sunday, August the 15th. Minister Rickford expressed, or acknowledged, our need for organic growth opportunities, suggested that he would work with us as much as possible. But we made it clear that, that we showed our, or expressed our frustration with how cumbersome the process is. He's assured us to some level, and perhaps the Mayor can speak more to this in a bit, but that they will work with us to try to look for some type of streamlined opportunities. So where we have landed is the property that would be just north, slightly northeast of Highway Commercial. And it's large tract of land owned by the Crown. Early last week, we advised MNRF officially via email that we will be starting the process, and so just putting them on notice. So the first, the first two items we need to address would be, we need to initiate the Crown land whose policy address. So there's a process there where we'll be seeking amendments. What we can be doing parallel to that, we'll also make application just under the Crown land review process, so we'll make an application under that as well. There's lots of work to do on this, and it could be anywhere, you know, it could be upwards to seven to eight years to have something like this completed. Based on past practices, I guess we're hopeful that that will be the case here, given that, again, as we've, as we've preached, the province that we owe 3% of the vacant land within our municipality, everything else is Crown or patent mining claims. So, we have some work to do, but just want to let you know the process has started, and I'll pass along to the Mayor, perhaps you can comment on Rickford, Minister Rickford's comments.
Great, thank you, Mr. CAO, and thank you for that report. Minister Rickford also spoke in regards to a pilot project in regards to some certain municipalities in the Northwest for Crown land development. Unfortunately, we don't have any literature back from the minister's office yet as to what this pilot project would entail, if it's cutting red tape, or what all of that means. I'm hopeful that this project, or pilot project, will fast-track municipalities, especially Red Lake, to obtain Crown land. But again, we have nothing written from his office yet to say how this will go. The other perceived potential problem, if we look at it from a financial perspective, is how much will they be asking for the Crown land? So my discussion with other Mayors in the Northwest, while they may have vacant land for sale, let's just say for argument's sake, for $10,000 an acre, Crown land is asking for triple the price. So we're going to have to work with the ministry and that effect as well too. But we'll see how the cards are dealt at that point, and hopefully, through the minister's support, we can fast-track Crown land development. So stay tuned, but we'll keep you updated as information trails in. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Okay, 5.1B, Community Partnerships. Mr. CAO.
Okay, I'll just, I understand that Christine will put up a map. The purpose for this discussion today is just to kind of highlight, highlight the importance of partnerships, and meaning, partnerships in which that meaningful, sustainable value comes from it. So we've been working for some time with Goldcorp, of course, now with Evolution Mining, on a hollow road, and we're on the final strokes of an agreement. And this is an opportunity, so this hollow road connecting from Campbell, the Campbell Complex, to, and of course, all the infrastructure, right, to Three Shop, to Cochner. There's, there's certain areas that you're crossing municipal property. So we're just working on an agreement in which to allow Evolution to do what they need to do to continue to be, you know, a sustainable operation, and we need to contribute to our economy here in Red Lake. But in that, as part of, when I speak of partnerships, some things have, have come of this, in which that benefits our community, and that is the expansion of the apron. So there's an opportunity for us now with Evolution to expand our apron space, so now we'll be able to accommodate more aircraft carriers or cargo-type facilities. And there is a demand, there has been for some time. What we've seen through, through the COVID pandemic, of course, flights have, there's been less flights, less passenger movements, but what we've seen is a real spike in the cargo movements. So, so in that, there's this opportunity for us to expand the apron, in which we will, and it just kind of goes, again, the value of relationships and good relationships, where it's a win-win for both community and company. Other things have resonated too. Potential dog park area in Red Lake, we're working towards that. So just wanted to highlight the importance of partnerships, and we saw that in a different way through the recent forest fire season, just the collaboration between the partners, whether, you know, the OPP, MNRF, their district team, their, you know, the boots-on-the-ground folks, they're fighting the fires in the, you know, protecting our community, and, you know, the, also just the people creating road networks and barriers, again, to provide a level of protection. So just wanted to highlight that, perhaps if Council wants to elaborate on anything that I've brought forward, you know, I welcome that.
Any comments? Counselor Christoph, go ahead.
Well, I'm adding on to that. It was during that, it was good to see some of the businesses like Hydro One, companies like that, the local contracting companies, all crews and all that, pitch in and help out, and give equipment to helicopters, helicopter, helping out up north with that. It was pretty, pretty nice to see everybody come together to help out. I just wanted to share.
Thank you. Counselor Hager?
When you have the meetings, do you have an opportunity to talk about the culture of the community as well? Is that something, like, I'm thinking with, in terms of like, schedules and things like that, just because there are some people that are concerned about, you know, hours against the shift in schedules. So is that an opportunity ever to discuss those kinds of things as well? Just something, I don't just...
You're talking specifically about the hollow road?
No.
No?
No, no, no. You made, you made reference to the partnerships, the meaningful partnerships, and the sustainability, et cetera. I'm just saying, at these meetings, obviously you talked about that, I'm just wondering if that's something that can ever be added to an agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. For sure.
Certainly, because we want to, the health of the, the company and its employees is important to our community.
Exactly.
Because there's so many people employed. But certainly, like, if there are some concerns out there, and we're aware of them, we can definitely, I mean, we've got a really good relationship with their team, then we feel comfortable. And I'm sure they welcome any feedback, you know, constructive feedback.
And it also speaks to relationships even outside of the mining industry, as Counselor Hager and Counselor Christoph have spoken about, but even with our First Nation neighbors to the north, working on potential future investments, that will benefit both communities. So, yeah, relationships are very, very important. Thank you for the comments. 5.1C, Water Meters. Mr. CAO.
So before you today is a request to proceed with rebuilding 50 defective meters. And the reason it's coming forward to Council, because it's an unbudgeted line item. So right now, we have roughly $1,200 in the, in the existing budget, but to repair those 20 units, it would cost us $12,908. So what we're requesting today, and we can, we can provide additional information come to Council meeting, when it goes for final approval, September 20th, that having, not having water meters is a detriment to us, because we're just, so if my water meter's faulty, I'm on a flat rate, and whether I'm a family of eight or, you know, living by myself. So we need that consumption, that, that meeting. So it just, it keeps everything above board, it gets, it keeps everyone paying the same. And so we're, basically, for today's purposes, just asking Council to bring it to your awareness, but to bring it forward to, to the Council meeting next Monday for, for final reading, and we can provide more information at that time. I believe our clerk has the resolution.
Any questions? Counselor Purdue?
What would the cost of 20 new ones go, over rebuild?
50 new ones? I don't have that number, but I'll have that for September 20th.
Then it'd be a good comparison to see if it's worth it, or...
Any other questions?
We got, how often are they, is it a rare occurrence, they go dead, or is it...
It's a consistent, consistent...
Like, is that one, is that one year?
This is a couple, so this has been a buildup. So this is not a one year.
Do you know how long, or...
Multiple years. I believe it's two and a half years that this has built up. But it's an ongoing, it's been an ongoing budget, budgetary item, that every year we have to send some out to get, to get rebuilt. And then, we want to be in a position where as we have, and this will get us in this position, where we'll have some on the shelf, so if one goes down to Cochner, we have one, we can replace it right away.
Moved by Counselor Purdue, seconded by Counselor Hager. Result of the Committee of the Hall hereby recommends that Council proceed with the rebuild of existing water meters. All in favor? This going to Council?
It's going to Council for final reading. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item under New Business 7, 7.1 is the recognition of truth and reconciliation, September 30th, for discussion. Mr. CAO.
So, as you're aware, the federal government has created a statutory holiday for September 30th, the National Day of, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. So they, they, the federal government passed legislation to make it a federal statutory holiday. The day provides each federal public servant the opportunity to recognize and commemorate the legacy of residential schools. It is a day to remember the tragic effects of residential schools in Canada, and their continuing impact on our Indigenous people. We've, we've, we've had discussion on, from a municipality, how will we address it, and really there, or how we want to, I guess, reflect on, on that day. From a operations standpoint, there's, there's really, there's three options. There's, that we observe the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation as a holiday, and do so every year. Option number two would be to recognize it, or designate it and observe it for this year only, and then give consideration for future years. There are some communities that are doing that, and there's some communities that are having it via, via that holiday. In some of those communities, it's, it's built into their collective bargaining agreement. That does not relate to us, that there's nothing in our collective bargaining agreement that states we have to. And the other alternative is, is just work as, you know, operations as usual. So in saying that, I'm open it up for discussion and debate, or if you have any questions, be happy to ask, as best I can.
Questions, comments? Counselor Hager?
Okay. It's, I think this is, needs more of a discussion. I don't know how many people, you know, haven't done a lot of reading on it, because there's recommendations here of some things that municipalities can do. I would definitely like us to do something formal, I'm not sure what though, because I think this is a really good opportunity for educating. I was talking to someone today that didn't even know that this was happening. They're still saying it's Orange Shirt Day, and that they didn't even realize it was a federal holiday. And I know recently Minister, Premier Ford has definitely said that this will not be an Ontario stat. So, so we're sort of caught in the middle, and I don't know, is this, should we be doing similar to what happens on Remembrance Day, where we offer opportunities for people to be able to participate in an activity? Like, one of the things that the Heritage Centre is going to be doing is, is offering a blanket exercise, and in particular, reaching out to municipal staff, hospital staff, educators, et cetera, to participate in. So that definitely, I think, if there's opportunities for people to be able to take some kind of training, I think we would, I would see us supporting that for sure. I don't know, I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
Well, and if I'm hearing you correctly, and please tell me if I'm wrong, there's two different areas here. There's, we have one with our employees, directly with our employees, and there's a second piece to do with the public. So with the employees, if I just stay on that thought first, I'd like to get Council's feedback on what Council would like to see happen with the employee portion of it. So, and don't forget, Counselor Hager and myself, we also sit on the Truth and Reconciliation Committee, and we've had discussions about what can be done in the municipality, but let me stay with the employees first. So, any thoughts, Counselor Christoph?
I'm not sure. As Counsel Hager said, I do believe that we should do something. Whether it's, like how you said, some communities are just observing it for this year, and then seeing, and having that discussion, because it is pretty quick coming up, and I would hate to make a quick decision on it going forward forever, but I think we should do something. I would, I would probably lean towards that one, because I mean, then you kind of see what plays out, how it works, and then maybe next year you do something different in combination with that, or, or it's part of the day you were doing this, and then the rest of the day off, or something. Yeah.
Counselor Purdue?
I had no clue that we had a choice. I thought a statutory holiday was just a statutory holiday, you would have to follow, but no, Ontario could, like, you know, Remembrance Day isn't a stat across Canada, some provinces are, but it's...
Federal stat. Yep, so this, this coming in is, is from the federal government. So federal, federal employees will have the day off. It is not, as Counselor Hager mentioned, it has not been adopted by the province as of yet, to make it a provincial holiday as well, to an official statutory holiday. And as the CAO alluded to the fact that there are some municipalities here in northwestern Ontario shutting down for the day, there are some that are shutting down for the day, but only for this year, not making decisions for years to come as to what's moving forward. And there are some that employees are showing up, but they're doing in-house training for, for part of the day, majority of the day. But I think that piece of it, from an operational standpoint, I don't know what we can do for training outside of the blanket exercise that you mentioned. But it's a day of observation and reflection, of course. So we need some sort of flavor from Council, and what kind of direction do we want to move with our employees, first of all? Mr. CAO?
Can I make a bit of a recommendation? I can suggest that the Council does not aim at a statutory holiday if, and that's coming from an operational perspective, as it relates to a collective bargain, a CPA. So my recommendation, or from a staff perspective, be one of the other two. And again, we're, I think each person will, will reflect on that day in their own way, whether it's a day off or not. So I just did, we didn't want to bring this forward, saying that, and Christine will not, is that we're not coming here asking for the day off. This is a, this is a very big, this is a very, very big and important subject as it relates to Canada. So I just didn't want you to feel that we were asking for a day off, that is not what we're asking. We're just looking for some type of direction on how we want to proceed. And things have happened quite quickly, that next year, we'll be in a better position to do what we feel is best for Red Lake, and all our, all our friends and neighbors here.
So that being said, Mr. CAO, can you go through the two recommendations again, then, so it's clear?
I sure can. So it would be that Council observe the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, and review the holiday for subsequent years. So allow for the day off for this year, and then we would review moving forward. The other alternative is that we just, that we don't designate or observe, but we still will, so I don't particularly like that wordage, but that it will be business as usual for us, that all operations will be, municipal offices will be open, everyone will be at work as per any other day.
Okay. Counselor Christoph?
Just, just to clarify, Remembrance Day, that's a federal stat, you know, that town, the municipality doesn't observe that, right?
Correct. However, would you allow, if, if someone wants to go, that we're very accommodating?
If, and if that were the case, again, they say, we would say, no, we're not going to observe that, but there's a blanket exercise going on, or there's something going on, then you definitely have leniency of allowing someone to participate in that, or allow those things.
True, yes. If I'm just trying to think of a head, say, of an operational perspective, Public Works, if anyone in Public Works wanted to do something, they would have to juggle to make sure what they would do. And I suppose potentially, Public Works could be close if everyone showed an interest. And I'm just using Public Works for example.
Alternatively, it could be someone, I'm on a different shift, and I don't start work till 3:00, well, when do I get my two hours to...
It opens up a bit of a can of worms.
Yes.
It can be sometimes tricky. Counselor Hager?
I'm thinking that in the spirit of reconciliation, and I like what you mentioned at the beginning, of how you would support if it's this year only, like, not like this year, but then review it. This is an opportunity for us to show how we are supporting. Like, this is a very, you know, I know that there were some issues when July 1st came and with the whole, the walk and the, and the choosing not to let off the fireworks. Those were things that we can get ahead of in a situation like this.
I agree.
Like, we could be more proactive and saying, this year, this is what we're going to do. We feel strongly, and we're going to support it, and then we'll review it. And who knows, in next year, it may become a provincial.
True, and we may have direction next year, and I'm, not that I'd like to assume, but I'm making an assumption the province is going to make a decision in the near future about forthcoming September 30th. But I agree, we should be as supportive as we can for a day of reflection, and I would hazard a guess that there may be some more walks again within our community, and people may want to participate as well too, along with a blanket exercise happening at the, at the Heritage Centre, and I'm thinking there's going to be a couple more events as it gets closer as well to... Your thoughts, Counselor Purdue?
No. This is a very big thing, and we don't have much time, and I'm scared to make the wrong decision very quick, I'm sure everyone else is. If we offer employees to take the day off, are we entitled to pay them for that day? Can they have a day off without pay, if they want to take the full day to reflect?
That's an option that...
I'm not too sure how that, that'd be an ideal option.
I don't know what type of statement that would be, that would make.
Yeah.
I think if we're, if, I think we're either going to do it or we're not, and that would be a...
be regarding the employees, that's just, again, from a staff perspective.
I would like to see everyone being able to participate if they wanted to. Like, Remembrance Day, it's another big one. Or do we just offer, like, see if we could get our own workshops for that day?
But if there are other community events happening, then, you know, it would be hard for us to dictate for what people take unless we set up a full day of something for all of the employees. And everyone during these difficult times, they have a different way of observation and reflection as well, too. So I don't want to infringe upon somebody's way they practice. So we could observe the day.
I was just going to say, I want to point there, that yes, you know, everyone deserves it a different way, but there's lots of other things that go on during the year that, there are people that aren't stat holidays, that are whatever, people take a vacation day or a personal day to do something during that day. So, yeah, this is a pretty big conversation to blow up with something that you don't want to, you don't want to make conversation, but you also don't want to hurt the municipality for operations or anything like that, for being shut down for a day. I mean, you have to look at all of that, right, to see what is the best thing for us to do.
Well, do we have numbers on how many, like, in Canadian, or Northern Ontario, from Thunder Bay to the border, what everyone's doing?
A lot of communities are working through it. There's, you know, I can speak to, you know, just like the city of Dryden is treating it as, they'll review it, there is a holiday this year, so they're closing down for this year, they'll review it. So there's a few communities, but I can't, I can't regurgitate the exact numbers. So it's kind of, I know Suleko is going to be looking at it, I believe, Wednesday night. Again, there's some that are, that are just, they're doing it on their own accord, some are doing it because of the attachment to the collective bargaining agreement. And there's, there's some that are, they're not, they're operation as usual. So it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag at this point. I know there's, like, the Health Unit, I believe, is taking it off or declaring this a stat holiday. If not, is, there's some Friendship Centers. Yeah, I don't, I don't have it. I mean, I can get that, but also, what does Red Lake want to do? Like, why do we, I mean, great, whatever Fort Frances wants to do, great, but we're Red Lake, we do what's best for us and our citizens. But I'd be happy to get numbers, if you guys wanted to defer this decision to next Monday, we could canvass out further and find out what it is doing, if that's, if that's your desire.
Did you say what your thoughts were? Like, what do you think we should do?
No, I haven't said yet. If you'd like me to go ahead, I can.
Well, we've all kind of said...
Yeah, no, I was waiting.
Yeah.
My thoughts on this are, we should have the day of observation and reflection. I feel Red, our employees here, with the newness of all the discoveries and everything that's happening with our truth and reconciliation, I think it would be for this year only to give our employees the day off and offer them any type of courses that are out there, or any type of program, such as, again, I'll reflect to the blanket exercise again, for employees, if they want to take that up. And I can't comment yet, because it's not official yet, but I'm also aware of other things that would be happening that day, potentially, through the Friendship Center as well. I'm not sure about a walk again to get the community together, but I've heard rumblings of that as well, too. So in recognition of everything that's happening, I see no real problem, given the employees the one day off, just for this year only. That's my thoughts.
Must it be a Thursday?
Yes, September 30th.
It is.
So, that being said, we need, is council willing to move forward with that? Would you like to have further debate on that? Would you like more information on what other municipalities are doing? How would you, how would you like to proceed with this?
Councillor Kristoff?
Firstly, I don't want to make that final decision today. Have to make that decision on the council meeting.
Good.
Yeah, just time to think about it. It'd be, I think it'd be good to have a council vote here as well, to have a decision on that. So we're all on the same page.
For sure. Councillor Hager?
I agree with where you're going, and I am fine with waiting, though.
Till Monday?
Waiting till Monday. My question also is, they give us in this document that came from Amla.
From Amla?
A draft resolution.
Yes.
Can that be put forward as well?
Certainly. Certainly. Councillor Perdut? You're good waiting till Monday, then?
Yeah, I'm fine with waiting till Monday. It was brought up as a discussion, and I wasn't really prepared to make a final decision. I didn't know that's where we were going.
Nope, that's fair.
And I have no issues with anything that was said on what we should do, and I understand the operations side, and I understand, like, our communities, like Mark, like the CAO said, we should do what's best for Red Lake, not what everyone else is doing, so.
For sure.
I would rather take some time to make sure I'm on board with making the right decision instead of a quick one right now.
Not a problem. So if any council requires any information prior to council meeting on Monday, please contact the CAO, and he'll provide you with that, whatever information. So was there a, there was no resolution?
No, we're going to wait till...
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, 7.2 land acknowledgement, Mr. CAO.
This item has come forward from the Truth and Reconciliation Committee, and there was a request that all committees of council start their meetings with the land acknowledgement.
Correct.
So let's open it up for council on if that's, council's will to proceed in that fashion.
So the land acknowledgement statement that we read prior to committee of the whole and council meetings, the Truth and Reconciliation Committee is asking that that same statement be read at all committees of council prior to the meeting starting. Any discussion?
Can I just add one piece?
Councillor Hager?
It was more than, it was all, like, not only having the committees, but also that it be on our website as part of it.
On our website as well, too.
It's on our website.
Oh, perfect, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So...
I think that's, that's fine, and any, so anything that we are part of?
Part of me.
Like the other, like, the library board, the rec committee.
Correct. Planning, everything. Any committee of council.
Yeah, I have no issues with that at all.
Councillor Kristoff?
So we will move forward on that, then? I don't know if we need that.
Just note in the minutes.
Okay, any further discussion on that? 7.2? Okay, seeing none, move down to item 7.3, a water feature. And I believe councillor Kristoff wanted this brought forward. Councillor Kristoff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the reason I brought this up was recent travels through to Winnipeg and the Thunder Bay. A lot of communities, they have something, like, in the water, a water feature, even when you head to Southern Ontario, pretty much, like, a lot of towns have a water feature, you can have water in there. So I was just throwing it out there to see what everyone's thoughts were, having something in Howie Bay. And, yeah, so here, I just threw up a couple of pictures of the price off it. This is a Canadian company, and it's a self, you put it in the lake, I've read the details on how you power it, there are some that are solar powered. But, well, this one's not solar, but anyways, I just wanted to throw it out there to see what anyone thought. It's like, we're going to be getting, the door's going back soon, that's going to go back out, that's going to look really good, it would just be kind of neat to have something in Howie Bay with, like, you see here Falls when you drive by, I bet you every time you drive by, you look out at the water, look at the water feature. Right? So it's kind of interesting, if you drive by here, we'll be looking out and see, so. Anyways, I just threw it out there to see what everyone's thoughts were on it, if this is something that we could look at getting or not doing, I'm okay with either, I just thought it'd be a good addition to Howie Bay.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's all, all I had, was just, I just gave an example of something, there's many, many different kinds, some with lights, some without lights.
Have you given any thought to where in Howie Bay?
Center, but closer towards, like, the Marine, closer in, not out, but closer in, so that for planes and everything, it's not going to affect any planes that are going to be taken out.
So closer on the residential side?
Well, so it would be center in between where Howie Bay camps and then, say, the government docks, but closer towards where the Marine in Howie. Unless there's, if I'm interested, there's another spot, whether it be in front of Kinsman or in front of Keasick, or Forest Point, or something like that, it would, you know, I just, Howie Bay just seems to be where everything is, everybody's in that part of Red Lake, so we can see. Anyways, just, I'm just throwing, I had some thoughts going, if we're, I don't know, part of the recreation plan, and, you know, wellbeing and all that, it is part of, it's something that's going to make you feel a little more in community.
And that was my next question, I was going to say, has Park and Rec looked at this at all?
No.
Councillor Hager?
Yeah, what in your falls, does it have lights or not?
No.
I don't recall seeing that, I think, but lights.
And I thought, was there not another purpose for that? I don't know, I can't remember why. I like the idea of lights. I think that, and that's, the location is a great focal point. There has been some discussion with some people wanting to find out whether or not, you know how we're going to be getting the map tax, and the municipality gets a certain amount, whether there is some opportunity to be able to have some kind of arts things or things to make our town look better by accessing some of those funds, so, I mean, that might be an opportunity to do, but it'd be interesting to find out what the cost would be.
So would council like us to bring something forward through the capital review process? We can bring some alternatives forward, some price ranges, and then you can have this, like, a more, I guess, serious discussion about it? Because it wouldn't, assuming we wouldn't be doing this for 2021, it would be 2022.
Oh, racing, you're giving it in 2022, you don't have four months.
I think it's, yeah, it's, it'd be something, I think, just minus, like, Canora was set up by the muskie. So would you want to put it in closer to the nourishment? Once it's back up, so, and that's out of the way of planes, but then there's a, I don't know if they use that hangar there, are there still planes coming in and out of that area? I haven't really watched, so it's just, yeah, I think that would look kind of neat from the boat into the nourishment for tourists.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, I agree with that, and if, you know, that would be something you, I think you would have to have a conversation with the floating operators in the area to say, hey, where, if we're going to do this, where is a good spot, where it's not going to be in the way, right?
Yeah.
Community partners, right? So...
Well, for sure, and that's going back to community partnerships. Yeah, some of my thoughts were like the float plane traffic, and then Red Lake Marine along there with boats coming in and out, and how Red Lake Marine would interpret that as well, too. And again, I think a lot of, you know, the old sales advertising, location, location, location. So it may be a worthwhile conversation for staff, kind of looked at something for next year.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Moved by councillor Kristoff, second to councillor Perdut, result that the committee of the whole hereby adjourns to meet again at the college chair. All in favor? Carrie.